All right, good morning, everybody. Good afternoon as well. If you notice, we have a new podium. This is really loud. We have a new podium. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if Dale Plon can come to the new podium and lead the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. All right, thank you, Dale. You're a gentleman and a scholar. Okay. At this time, we're going to call the meeting to order. Individuals wishing to address the City Council are requested to complete a speaker card. When you do complete the speaker card, just leave it on the new podium. Please observe the three-minute limit for communications. And once called upon to speak, state your name and city of residence for the record. Just a note, revision to the agenda, item two, the presentation was updated. I'm sure you all noticed that. And then moving on, communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the City Council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit. State your name and shoe size for the record. If you wish to address the City Council, please come up to the podium located here. Once you have completed your comments, please leave your speaker card at the podium. Up first, oh, Sylvia, are there any communications from the public?
Mayor, I don't see any speakers for communication from the public.
Joe, were you planning on, you're good? Okay. All right, so with that, public sessions, public speaking is closed. We'll go to agenda item number one, Sixth Street Transformation Design Concepts. Keegan Olds, CIP Supervisor, will present the item. Good luck, Keegan.
... supervisor, hearing section, managing the overseeing, I should say, the Sixth Street Transformation Design Concepts. Joining me for this presentation today is Jitka Dekoeva with Studio 111, who will be handling most of the presentation to explain our various design concepts. Today's agenda, we will of course have the ask. Jitka will take over from that point and go over the background of our Sixth Street Transformation Plan. We will review the current conditions, both pre-striping as well as the newly placed striping, our proposed concepts, along with Public Works' recommendation for selection, and then we'll open up to questions. The ask is that the City Council provide direction on its preferred Sixth Street Transformation Design Concept. This will inform Studio 111 to design the Main to Ramona section, and will also inform City staff direction to design the Grand to Grand section that excludes the Main to Ramona section of Sixth Street. And with that, I'll hand it off to Jitka.
I'm a little taller, but I'll kind of scooch down here. Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Jitka Dekoeva, and I am the project manager from Studio 111. I am managing the Sixth Street Transformation, and I will talk about the design concepts here. So kind of like a little project area context, Sixth Street is important corridor at the heart of downtown and supports east and west connectivity in the city. It basically defines the experience of downtown for both locals and visitors. The key points we look at for the connectivity was the urban district with regular street grid and high density of intersection. And kind of looking at the two circles, those are the five- and 10-minute walk radius for people to navigate on foot, which typically people are feel comfortable to walk through. So a lot of potential in this area. Looking at the past planning efforts, we checked the Downtown Revitalization Plan, and which identified the Sixth Street Transformation as the priority public infrastructure improvement project within the Downtown Revitalization Plan. There is also a lot of key opportunity areas, like the Corona North and South Mall, and several civic spaces. And here is the kind of synopsis from another document, the Downtown Design Guidelines, which prioritizes downtown as a destination for citizens and visitors. There is a lot of key fundamentals which were taken from this document by the design team. And another thing the design team was looking at was the summary from a public outreach which was provided to us. And all these things and research basically influence and drive the design and the concepts I will be walking through. The project goals and priorities we establish are kind of divided into four areas, place making, connectivity and mobility, inclusivity, and economic and environmental vitality. And as Keegan mentioned, this is the pre-striping condition when we had our project kickoff meeting and a walk and kind of look at the areas between Main and Ramona. And again, looking at the pre-striping conditions, I will zip through those pretty quickly since they are no longer relevant. And this is the situation right now after the re-striping occurred, looks like very recently too. All right, so we are going to look at three design options. A lot of them, a lot of aspects are fairly similar, but each is a little different, and each has pros and cons. So I will kind of quickly go through all three of these. We will always start with design precedence for each option. So this is option number one, which we labeled as a stroll, which basically has a planted median buffered by lane, and you can see examples from kind of like the localized area if you wish to visit and see those in person. So this is kind of the main, main concept. Share, bus, and car driveline in the middle with a planted median. Then we have a Class II bike lane and parallel parking on the sides. There are designated dining areas along, and also stormwater planters which can infiltrate runoff, and as well as the planted median. And kind of looking how this, because again, the task is only between Main Street and Ramona, and how this translate beyond all the way to Grand Avenue, with the potential of adding a bus stop within the North and South Mall. And then again, looking within the options towards the West Block, which is much narrower right-of-way, and how we can transform this while keeping the bike lanes and the parallel parking. And looking at the East Block, which is even more narrow. Okay, option number two, which we are labeling as a flex because it has a flexible component. Main feature is the centralized diagonal parking with shade trees and lighting, and also designated bike lane along the street edge. And you can see the dining at building facades, and also the flexible plaza, if you will, used for temporary roadway closures during large events and gatherings. So here we can see the, again, shared gas and share car and bus travel lane. The lane is a little wider now, so you can accommodate the backing of the cars from the median diagonal parking, centralized diagonal parking, again, bike lane, and a space on a side for dining. And the beauty of this option is the potential for a full street closure between Main and Ramona for events. So this is kind of what it would look in a day of event, where you can keep the bike lanes open, but basically eliminate the through-vehicle traffic through this area and accommodate events, place making, food trucks, outdoor dining, dancing, whatever you wish. And the transition again to the more narrow right-of-way beyond Main Street on a west and Ramona on a east. This is the transition. We are keeping the median space, again, one shared lane for bus and cars, parallel parking, and a bike lane, and same as the narrower portion of the East Block with the bike lane, travel lane, and parallel parking. Last but not least option we are going to look at is a double spine. We are labeling it as double spine because there is basically two rows of planting on each side of the roadway. It's a two-way single travel lane with parallel parking and separated protected bike lane with street side and furniture at the planting bulbouts. So the main difference, as you can see very quickly, is there is no a median, but the median planting is pushed to the side, separating the bike lane from parallel parking and planted area. And again, there is a space on a side for outdoor dining. This is again how it transform beyond Ramona and Main Street, with again, the potential adding a bus stop here at the North and South Mall. And transforming on the West Block towards of Main Street, you can see keeping the bike lanes consistent, no median, one travel lane, and bulbouts at the intersections. And same going towards Ramona, bulbouts any intersection, parallel parking, and bike Looking kind of at the main key features breakdown we were going through, so all three options have shared car and bus lane. The width vary for each option. Bike lane two class is always present in each options. And then there is either parallel parking or diagonal parking. And we also added the potential of adding a bus stop between Main and Ramona, which lends itself well as option A and option C. And kind of like how we did when we look at the beginning on the goals and priorities, this is kind of like the metric we use if the options met the goal partially, if they met the goal, or if they exemplifies the goal. And you can kind of go through pros and cons, or we can go later. I'll just kind of zip through this for now. And here we see the options again, side by side, with the Public Works' recommendation in the middle, which is the flex option. All right, thank you.
Okay, and then coming back to Public Works, as Jitka mentioned, our recommendation, and this is also in consultation with the Downtown Revitalization Team, with the City Manager's Office, as well as consultations with emergency services and all other groups at the, at the city involved in this process, we are recommending option B. And I can go over why. So both option A and option B present traditional manners of doing a lane reduction within a downtown area. The option B, whereas option A is more traditional in that it provides, let me go ahead and go back, a kind of central area as well as those bulbed-out crossings, the bike lanes throughout the corridor, parallel parking, which is fairly standard. Option B presents a better place-making opportunity, where you have an area with character in that Main to Ramona block. It still has the same features in that there's a planted area, the bike lanes, the shorter crossings for pedestrians, but you also have the option of using that area if you were to shut down the block and use it for event spaces, a farmer's market or another event in the area. And we've discussed options as far as providing safety and security for those events at a high level as part of this suggestion with emergency services. And then we also feel that option C, the double spine, doesn't quite fit all the original downtown plan objectives. Landscaped medians were a key feature of that, breaking up the crossing for pedestrians as they move from North Mall to South Mall and vice versa. It also, although the bike lanes are fully protected by a landscaped area and a concrete area, I'd like to note that emergency services drew some concerns in that, in a pinch, when navigating through these tighter areas, they can use the bike lane, or drivers can use the bike lane when it's directly adjacent to the travel lane rather than protected to pull over and allow for emergency services to navigate past. So we've put a number of thought into this, or a large amount of thought to this, and like I said, Public Works' recommendation and jointly along with the Downtown Revitalization Team, we are recommending option B, but would like to open it up to the City Council to review, discuss, and really provide input on the direction that we'll be proceeding in these, this series of projects to transform Sixth Street. And I would like it to open up to questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's, let's go with the public first. Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, I did, sorry, have two residents wanting to speak on this item.
All right, Joe?
Good afternoon. So you probably won't be surprised that, I think this is a premature, half-baked idea. This ought to be done in conjunction with an actual plan to revitalize downtown, not just revitalize the streets. You're costing people time and money. You're costing the businesses. If you, if you achieve your stated goal of reducing traffic on Sixth Street, you're reducing traffic for businesses with absolutely no benefit to them. This is not going to help them. This is going to hurt them. So I hear you talking about small businesses, you know, people on the corners that you want people to have an opportunity. How do you, how do you suppose Corona Burger is going to feel about this? You think it's going to help them? You think it's going to help more people get to them? When people are frustrated about being knocked off of Sixth Street and having to drive around Grand, or cut through the neighborhoods, how do you suppose this is going to help? I get doing this if you're actually building a downtown, but you decided a couple months ago that you weren't actually going to invest in building anything downtown, that this is basically going to be an apartment complex. So when you build the apartments, how is this going to work? If this came to, if this came to the planning commission, they would bounce it, because you're taking one part without taking the other part. This would not pass the planning commission. So this would, you know, when you're, they, they always want to see the whole thing. They want to see, well, how's the street going to interact with what we're going to build? Well, you don't know what you're going to build. You could say what you think you might want to build, but we all know that since you're not actually going to build anything, it's going to be up to the private market, and the private market likes Metro at Main. So, you know, you could just potentially plot Metro at Main down there and say, well, how does the street work then? But the two have to work together. And so to consider this now is ridiculous. And, and, and I've heard the talk, well, this was approved previously, this is a discuss of prior council, and this is a long time been a plan. It was never a plan by itself. This was part of a downtown revitalization. This wasn't the downtown revitalization. So just moving and doing something is not right. Just, you want to, I get it, you want to, you want to make a mark down there and say you did something, but this is the wrong way to do it. This is the wrong way to do it. Wait till you know what's going down, what's going to be down there, and then do it. That way, people can see it, people can understand it, they'll be, God help us, we ever have any actual destination places, you know? But I don't see any on the, on the horizon. And if you think you know about any, you sure haven't shared them with the public, you know? And so if you think you have, you have a view like over the horizon that you haven't shared, you know, other than that, it's hopes and dreams, wishes and prayers, you know, thoughts and prayers, whatever, you know, that don't actually mean anything. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Joe. Maddie?
Maddie Paxton, District One. I've had a lot of people come up to me that they think that I have any input at all, saying this is ridiculous. And that's the kind way of putting it. The second thing is, to get here today, I took, I take Eighth Street, because the workarounds, if you can't go down Main Street, it's either Eighth or Third. It's ridiculous. People don't stop, they park out, again, with the cars parked in the middle of the, you know, on the side, only one car at a time can go down. I, I don't know, I just can't understand in what world this would work. Backing into a space? Nobody's going to sit and stop and be polite and let somebody back into a space. Most of us don't back in, and it's, it's, I just see this as a nightmare. I wish again that, like Joe Morgan had just mentioned, that you waited a little bit. It was busy, it was difficult before, when it was two lanes, one lane, it's going to be ridiculous. So we're going to keep our police department busy with all the problems that are going to be happening, and all the accidents, and all the confrontations. So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Maddie. I don't know your name.
My name is Jeff Johnson. I've lived in the city for 35 years. But I, I too kind of agree with the previous two speakers in regards to the traffic. As being a longtime public service employee, I'm curious about our first responders being able to get down through Sixth Street with this new traffic plan. Sixth Street, in my opinion, has always been super busy, day and night, and particular during the typical business hours. And with it being four lanes, it's busy. And now we're, we're down to two lanes between each West Ground and, and East Ground, and I don't see that's a benefit for us. I haven't seen, as the other two had spoken, I'm not seeing really where our businesses are going to come from. The existing businesses are, are already there. Most of them have been there for quite some time, but this revitalization plan for the downtown area, I'm not seeing as much specifics, but I am, again, I, my question to the, the experts over here is, you know, what happens when an eight-ton fire truck wants to, wants to go down there and it's completely booked up with cars? What's going to happen then? We're going to delay the first responders? So I don't know if that traffic study's been done, but I assume that it has. So can somebody tell me, you know, how, how are these people supposed to get all the way when the fire engine's trying to get through to an emergency, or the police department, or the ambulance service? So when traffic's completely booked up? It already stresses most of the first responders out to begin with, trying to get to the call, and now you've got traffic completely booked up. So now they're going to have to reroute around Sixth Street that used to have, you know, two lanes going each direction. If somebody can please help me to answer that, that would be great.
Yeah, for sure.
Mayor, I was going to follow up on that particular subject matter when it was my turn to speak.
Well, we, we need to close.
Yeah, when it's my turn, sure.
Oh, okay. But yeah, we'll, we'll get to your question. Did you want to go first, Jim?
Sure.
Okay. You cool with that?
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. So just confirm, so this particular presentation is Main to Ramona only, and then later on, there'd be similar themed style along Sixth Street between Grand and Grand, right?
Go ahead, Keegan, you can start answering some of these questions as they come out.
Yeah, of course. Yes, this will directly inform the Main to Ramona section. However, understanding, say, example, concepts A and B as far as how they would treat the Grand to Grand section in the very high-level concepts presented here are very different from, say, section, or sorry, concept C. So that, this does in essence influence the Grand to Grand section, although of course, that final design and, and rendering would be worked on and shared afterwards. Because the transformation is perhaps greatest, we have the largest amount of space from Main to Ramona, that's where this, this input is sought primarily for this. And then from that concept, we can generate the rest of the transformation.
Okay, and then can you, can you state why your, again, why your Public Works' recommendation is what it is for option two? What's your main reason for that? Because obviously, the first one's, the traditional one, is easier for me to understand just because that's the style I've seen more of, but I'm very intrigued, you know, why you believe that option two is good.
Right, and, and again, it's not just me, but the, the, we've went through this process with the Downtown Revitalization Team, consulted the various groups, and had a discussion amongst ourselves. And really what it came down to is, because option A and B are so similar in how it treats that outside area, and, and consistent with kind of a traditional downtown revitalization, we really felt that the, we should, we should go ahead and make a place of character. If we're, if we're going to have this transformation, let's do something that's a little bit unique, that we can use for events, if desired, that we can really make our mark upon the city and make something unique for the city of Corona that really ticks all of those boxes of having that, that point of character, of inclusivity, of making it easier for all modes of transportation to navigate through that area. It still provides parking, it still provides a It still provides parking, it still provides additional landscaping, and really, like I said, kind of ticks all the boxes. That doesn't mean that option A isn't a good option. But like I said, it is kind of more traditional for this type of transformation.
Can you show the, some of the discussion about the back-end parking? I had the same questions on that. That's just between Main and Ramona eastbound or westbound on Sixth Street, correct?
Yeah, I think I can defer to our traffic section.
Good afternoon. So regarding the back-end angled parking, we were asked to do an interim design while these concepts were being fleshed out. Can't do parallel parking there because that, as Keegan mentioned, that side of the street is, it's a 90-foot right-of-way. So the parallel parking would be pretty far off the side of the road. And you can't have nose-in angled parking with a bike lane behind it because that causes people to back up into a known bike lane. So this is an innovative concept that has been used in a lot of major downtowns, Austin, Portland, things like that. So again, this is an interim phase until Keegan's project moves forward. And the back-end angled parking is just out there striped right now, but I don't believe it's involved in any of these options being presented today.
So just so I understand, so the back-end parking will not be the way people park after this is all built out?
Yes, that is correct.
The proposed recommendation does not have the back-end.
It's just temporary.
Correct.
Oh, okay, well, that helps. I was going to ask that if it was permanent, if the driver had the ability to pull into the bike lane to at least get out of the main flow of traffic so he or she could back in?
That is correct. You're able to utilize the bike lane if it is not being utilized by a cyclist to kind of pull out of the way of traffic and back into your angled spot.
But it's only temporary, so, okay.
Interim.
Interim, all right.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't remind everyone that a video was published today on how to use it. It was posted on the city's social media.
Yeah, and I actually saw that. I just, I didn't see where you would pull into a bike lane in that video. Maybe I just missed it. I was looking on my phone.
I'd have to look at it again, but the bike lane's shown there.
Okay, and I'm not overly concerned if it's just temporary. Okay, so we know what Public Works recommendation is for the consultants. I'm assuming you've done a lot of these in your life?
Hey, yes, so Studio 111 work on several streetscapes. I am pretty new, actually, honestly, myself. But if you want to see like a previous examples of work, I'm very happy to share that.
The reason I ask is because I wanted to know what the expert's recommendation is. I'm going to consider you the expert, even though you haven't been doing it that long. I'm sure you've worked with plenty of people that have. What would they recommend and why? Like, right now, I'm leaning towards learning more about A and B. But what works best in your experience? What looks the best? What focuses more on bringing people together? And so I don't know if you can answer any of that.
Yeah, of course. I think, and again, you might not like it, but it all depends what is the goal here. And the goals we set up at the beginning was creating a destination, creating a place for people to gather in downtown, creating a place for, you know, families to hang out. And instead of just providing a space to drive through, it's a space to be. So it's a destination concept. But I also want to make clear that all of these options are great and we would not present anything we do not recommend.
Which one do you like best?
I like the option B too because it provides flexibility.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the epicenter plaza-type atmosphere would be more for option two as well. Okay. So the emergency vehicle, that's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up. So I do want to get clarification on this because I've driven fire trucks for a long time and I'm used to navigating them in very tight spaces. We just think of the right shoulder of the freeway. But I just wanted to make sure that there is enough room. So we have five feet of, it looks like five feet, of bicycle lane, right? Aaron Savant, somebody?
Can I ask a clarifying question real fast? Are you talking about what's being proposed here or what's out there today?
No, what the end job is.
Okay, Keegan, can I defer to you?
Yeah, let me see if I can pull this back on a few slides. Perhaps? There we go. Oh, okay, so it's going to be a little more difficult to see. Jekha, you might have the actual widths right here. But in preparing, in reviewing these concepts, I should say, that was kind of a key factor. So we spoke with PD, we sat down with a large group of PD as well as the Fire Marshal and had these discussions. Because as you know, and as you can imagine, tightening up the area, especially when it comes to, say, the travel lanes, when you reduce that area, you reduce the amount of space that travelers have to pull over and navigate away. So they actually presented their thoughts on all, there were actually originally four concepts, but we eliminated one for this reason in that it reduced the amount of navigable space that they had. And between options A and B, again, are fairly similar in that you have the bike lane, you have the travel lane. So if I remember correctly, it's a five-foot bike lane and the 12-foot lane, right? Jekha? Yes?
Twelve foot in A and 12 and a half in B.
12 and a half feet in B. So about 17 feet. So the emergency services would be able to navigate past vehicles pulling over as well as in option C, there were kind of mixed feelings. The Fire Marshal noted that it's possible that if all vehicles pull over on both sides of the street, they can sort of weave through. But it was for the same reason that they preferred options A and B, and PD expressed the same. I consulted them to get advice as well for other emergency services, knowing too that these blocks are relatively short with various openings and other ways to navigate around the area. So it would depend on the type of emergency. And in all of these, we would be working on an emergency operations plan. And throughout when actual design, final design happened, working with emergency services to make sure that they can navigate not just up and down Sixth, but navigate to the side streets as well to make sure that they're able to perform to the best of their ability while we still have this transformation in effect.
Yeah, because I'd be curious if that center median where there isn't a lot of landscaping and trees, if it could be configured like Foothill Parkway. Center median is where it has locations where it's not a curb that you'd have to climb up on, but it's curved, so you can just drive over and go down the other side. That allows a fire truck or a police officer to turn around or get to the other side of the street without having to go over curbs. So I don't know if you're considering that, but I would ask that you look into that at least.
Definitely during final design, yeah.
Yeah, okay, and then, let's see. So I just want to understand, so our feedback today will allow you to kind of look at one or two of these and bring it back to a council meeting where we have everybody here, where we, the public can be here to kind of study this a little bit more, maybe narrow it down though, and then offer their input on this and see how it's changed from today's design to whatever the comments are by my colleagues and myself to what the future design would look like. So is that, is that kind of what we're going to do?
That's correct. That's the plan tonight, or today. If we can get some sense of feedback that'll allow our designers to keep moving forward with one of these concepts. But of course, final design and bringing that back to council for approval before anything is fully signed off is the plan.
Okay, well, my first gut, I guess, is, you know, that we got Public Works, we got the experts. I'm intrigued by option B. Depending on what I hear from my colleagues or anybody else, that's where I would lean towards now with studying more and presenting more renderings to us in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Jackie?
Thank you for the presentations. I really appreciate it. I have a few questions and then comments, as is typical for me. So just confirming that all three designs have the same footprint, that none of them are requiring us to acquire any more space, any more right-of-way acquisitions, right?
That is absolutely correct. And if you go through the presentation, you'll know, because we have those high-level concepts for the outside sections, all three of these designs are primarily within the Main to Ramona block where we have the largest footprint and can really do something more transformative. And since we are limited in right-of-way, east and west of there, it's a bit more typical for this style of transformation. And we are entirely working within city of right-of-way.
Which you touched on, one of the comments, I'll just make it now, which is, again, sometimes when we're talking about like just really big concepts, it's so natural for us to get like these little like anxiety prickles of like, oh, this is big change, wait a second, change is scary. And it's important for us to remember the scope, right? So Main to Ramona. Do you have a visual or can we pop one out of Google Maps of exactly what that distance looks like? Because we're talking about one block, Main to Ramona.
I believe earlier in the presentation, there's a high-level, there should be a high-level image.
Can you go to that? I just want folks to see.
There's a good one, and then again.
Go back to that, I think that's a good one right there.
Yeah.
Where was it? There, okay. So it's Main Street to Ramona. And that North Mall, that is not a street.
Correct, that's more illustrating the pathway. There's the breezeway between South and North Mall, kind of illustrating how that would interact with this concept in particular. And then, yeah, just labeling, yeah, it's not a street, North Mall, but it does show where North Mall is, and same with South Mall on the south side.
Yeah, I want to sit with that for a minute. That is, that is the scope of what we're talking about today. And, okay. Is there any indication of whether there's a design that is more favorable for traffic flow?
I think consistently, since they all are one lane in each direction, a bike lane in each direction, they're fairly consistent as far as traffic flow goes between all three concepts.
Just because, so for instance, I know that that when you look at traffic flow and like the greater good with urban design, roundabouts, rotundas are better than streetlights. But try telling a West Coast driver that roundabouts are better than a four-way light and that's not, I don't think anyone will agree with that. So thinking about, you know, for instance, option B with flex parking, nose-in to the median, whereas option A has the parallel parking on the sides. Do we know, is there any data, any evidence of what our drivers, what folks in Corona or even in California are better at doing that would impact traffic flow? Do we know any of that, Aaron?
I think it would be hard to quantify better at doing for drivers. But Aaron might be able to tell if there's actually specific studies.
That's a great question. Pretty, pretty big question, actually. So what's out there today is using the latest standards that the public hasn't really been exposed to so much, you know, all the green out there for bike lanes and things like that. So as far as how California in general is coping or adapting to these newer treatments, if you will, still kind of yet to be determined. There's not a whole lot of case studies. There's a lot of cities who have done exactly this. And, you know, there was a learning curve for it, but it just takes time.
Gotcha. So there isn't necessarily like any case studies, any evidence that shows that one is better by a lot than the other for traffic flow?
Councilmember Scias, I'd like to put in my input there. I've been in former cities, cities of Rialto, cities of Redlands, cities of Palm Springs, and we've actually implemented these concepts even prior to the city of Corona. And they've worked quite well. We've had the public adapt to it because it focuses on the safety of the cyclists. It focuses on the expectations of the drivers. And that learning curve goes pretty quick. And I, just from the cities that I've been in and what I've already implemented, I don't see any issues with the learning curve with the public.
Okay, and to be clear, my question is more about, is there a benefit between, for instance, option A and option B's parking for traffic flow? And it sounds like we don't know. But what we do know is that there isn't much of a difference between either.
I can clarify that a little bit. Keegan, can you go to your three options again? There you go. As far as traffic flow, parking takes time. You're taking a vehicle out of the flow and parallel parking takes the most time. Angle parking is fast in, but slower out. You have to wait for a gap to back out in traffic. And reverse angle parking is just the opposite. Safer to get in, but faster to get out. So as far as options go, parallel parking would be the slowest here. And option B with the, you know, nose-in angled parking, I would indicate would probably be the faster solution because it's usually a two-movement, not three or four. And how good are we at parallel parking in California?
Thank you, Aaron, that's what I wanted to know. I appreciate it. Do we have an understanding of what the cost of each option will be? Are they similar? Do we have a cost breakdown?
So following our contract, after an option is chosen, we will engage a cost estimator.
Is there a way to get a cost estimator before we choose an option? Because I think that that might play a role.
Yeah, we've already, all these options would be in similar costs, yes. There's no significant cost difference in any of these options.
I'll ask then, when this returns to us in council, I'd like to see the cost range. And I know the request is to narrow us down to one, and I don't think I can do that. I think I can narrow one out to consider two at the next, because I would like this to sit a bit and have some more time to contemplate it. So at the next meeting, I would love to see at least a range, if one's on the higher end, if one's on the lower end, what have you. What does the pedestrian crossing look like for option B? Like, is it, because, you know, you're crossing a larger span? Like, is there any concerns about safety there? Do people cross, stop in the middle and then cross the end? Like, what does that look like?
Right, I think both options A and B are actually very similar in that respect. When a pedestrian is crossing, they cross one single bike lane, then one lane, then through the median area, and then the other lane in the other opposite direction and the bicycle lane in the opposite direction. Each of these have the same pedestrian traffic interaction time between the concepts. But that option B does provide a larger pedestrian refuge in that it's the space of two sets of angled parking, right? Versus option A has a thinner median. In each case, the idea is to provide that pedestrian refuge. There's already an existing signalized pedestrian crossing at this block. And in both cases, the idea would be to give them time to navigate through that intersection. I think the distance is, overall, that entire crossing distance, if you count the bulb out from option A, would be shorter, like the gap from edge of bike lane to edge of bike lane. However, again, there's a larger refuge in option B. Additionally, if you're parking in option B, that's, you would navigate to that crosswalk and then over to your destination using that parking area. In the case of option C, you would cross a bike lane separately, which is an interaction we're probably not necessarily used to here, right? Then go into the planted median/parking area and then cross two lanes consecutively. And then, again, the planted area and the bike lane. Again, that interaction between bicyclists and pedestrians that they may not be used to. And that's another reason why we're not recommending option C over option B.
Tell me, you said there's signalized pedestrian crossing? So traffic on both sides will be signaled to stop to allow pedestrians to cross?
In its current format, yes, it is.
Okay, then that like takes the worry away. Because I'm here visualizing someone crossing option A and having to navigate a smaller median to like stand there on an island to wait until, you know what I'm saying? But this is signalized, so that's good.
Right, and we would look at all options for that as well. Obviously, signalizing it and allowing pedestrians to cross and hit that button is probably the safest man- Obviously, signalizing it and allowing pedestrians to cross and hit that button is, is probably the safest manner to do so. But of course, in the odd event that somebody's not observing that signal, again, that, that conflict point is much smaller.
So I wanted to ask as well about the current design. And I appreciate that it's, it's the interim. And I did not know that you can't nose in when there's a bicycle lane behind. So that makes sense. But it's interim, so. And then I also had questions about emergency services, but my colleague has clarified that completely. So, so on to my comments. Again, I, I don't think I can decide between A and B today because I think that there's, I have enough questions where I'd like to see a little bit more. And I, and I would like more time for input to get to decide which of the two. So I would like to see A and B come before us on a council meeting. I'd like to see what a cost looks like for each, at least, at least a range. And most importantly, to just provide a little more time to ruminate on this change and to provide for more input. That being said, you know, I think what's coming to me as we're having all these discussions about these big changes and downtown revitalization is, you know, the theme of it's always darkest before the dawn. It always gets toughest right before you're done. And we're, we're making big changes and that is a challenge. But, you know, I'm betting on us and we need to, you know, the, what we were doing wasn't working. And I'm not willing to stay with what we've been doing for the last 20 years. So I think it's, it's more than enough time. And, you know, I, I, I know that we can do it. So those are my thoughts. Mayor.
Thank you, Jackie. As you know, we're missing a couple of council members tonight. Tony Dodario couldn't, council member Dodario couldn't make it tonight, but he did leave some comments. And Sylvia is going to read them into the record.
All, after reviewing this presentation, here are my thoughts. Overall, I prefer option one. It seems to, it seems as it is the most conducive to maintaining the balance between the walkability we are trying to create and the flow of traffic. My concerns for option two are that I'm concerned with people parking in the center and then walking into oncoming, uncoming traffic to get to their destination. I'm concerned about traffic from people trying to back out of the spaces and/or waiting for parking in the median. For option three, I do not like the idea of meter parking. Also, having no median between the routes of traffic visually, to me, is not great. Thank you.
I think that's the quickest Tony's ever spoken. So I, I guess it's my thoughts. So I, I do have some questions and some questions have been answered for the traffic people. The, the city wants to introduce AI traffic. Has, is the downtown going to be part of the blanket AI that gets installed in the future?
Yes, Sixth Street is part of that project.
Okay. So it's, it's conceivable to say that the AI will help push people through faster, right?
That's a fair statement. It's going to take into account all the data it collects and help us make better traffic decisions.
Okay. So that's a win. I'm with Jim. I, I didn't really like the backend parking. I know Matty talked about it for a little bit, but it's going away, so it's a moot point. I think the emergency vehicles have been addressed. I, personally, I, Corona was never meant to be a cut-through city. It was the California state that made in 1950, it basically laid down the law to the city and said, you need to widen Sixth Street from two lanes to four lanes because we need to get people home to Riverside faster. And it was a slap in the face, but that was the direction of the state and the city had no choice. The city does now have a choice. There's a 91 freeway. If people want to go home to Riverside, they should stay on the 91 freeway. There is no absolute reason why, why Sixth Street needs to be a cut-through lane, period. It doesn't belong to other cities. It belongs to our city. And part of the goal of this revitalization is to make Corona, especially the downtown, a destination downtown. And I believe this lane reduction is part of it. So with that, it's no, if you know me, I'm thoroughly addicted to social media. I read Facebook all the time. And when the lane reduction took place last week and early this week, there was no lack of comments. And some of them hurt. And some of them were really funny. And I think some of them, people were just trying to speak with common sense. And I think that's fair of the citizens to do, to do that. But with that, there is the question that, that I probably see, see the most is why do this now and not later? There's no reason to do this now until you start building something. Why are you doing this now and not later? You're not doing anything else. And quite honestly, I reject the premise. I don't think we're just reducing lanes just to reduce lanes. I know there's quite a bit going on. There's North Gate that's coming. There's multiple, multiple closed session meetings where the downtown is being aggressively discussed and sought after. There's a lot going on. I would even say with this lane reduction, that it's a chance and time to study it, right? You guys are figuring out what works, what doesn't work, and how we can make it better going forward. I believe, I, I believe we have the right team in place. I believe we have the money to do this. I believe in the downtown revitalization. I believe in our city manager. And I don't want to get to the, to the end of my council term and say I did nothing, that I didn't take a risk, that I didn't take a chance. If, if that's, if that's where I need to end up when I'm done here, then I'm a failure as a council member. I, I would rather take the risk. I would rather swing for the fences. I think Jackie said it right. Sometimes you go through the dark before you get to the daylight. I think we're going through a little bit of dark before we get to the daylight. And so I'm all in. And hopefully, people will start making more funny comments than me on social media, but have at it. As for, as for the option that I like best, I, I actually really like, well, let me back up. There's a saying that form follows function, right? So I think if you were to pick the best option where form follows function, I would go with option B. But if I had to pick the best option that I like personally and forget about function, then I would go with option A. So I'm with Jackie. I'd like to see both A and B. I think they're both good options. And there's benefits to both and there's consequences to both. I do agree with council member Dodario. When I did look at option B, I, I was worried about kids and moms and traffic and kids stepping into traffic. So that is a concern. And, but that's where I'm at, A and B. So I think, I think that's it. Mr. Johnson, did you get your question answered? Do you feel adequate or, okay?
Mayor, thank you for the direction. We will prepare this for an upcoming council meeting and bring it back and give you guys a chance to gather more input and, and give that some more thought. And we'll seek some further direction at that point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jacob. Number two, agenda item number two, the 10-year pavement management plan. This would be riveting.
If I may, I would like to note on the agenda, it does state that Jitka is presenting that. It is, I will be presenting.
Oh, boy. All right. Fascinate us with pavement. Good luck, Jitka. The other Jitka.
All right. Thank you very much. Good afternoon again. My name is Keegan Olds, the CIP supervisor of the Public Works Streets and Stormwater Engineering Section. Today, I'll be presenting the 10-year pavement management plan. Today's agenda for this presentation, we will, of course, have the ask and introduction, the background on what we have been doing, our proposed plan, and then we'll open it up to questions. The ask is that the city council provide direction on its preferred target PCI, which I will elaborate on, for the new 10-year pavement management plan. So I'd like to start. What does a pavement management plan do? Or, and we'll call it a PMP regularly in this presentation. It develops a roadway maintenance and rehabilitation plan. It assesses the condition of street pavement, prioritizes roadway repairs based off of roadway conditions, and it ensures cost effectiveness. One of the components of a pavement management plan is the traffic circulation element. As seen on this slide, 26% of our roads within the city are classified as arterials, 17% as collectors, which collects traffic. Hint's in the name, from local streets to arterials. And then your smallest streets are your local residential, as well as local industrial. But together, those two make the largest share of our center lane miles within the city. Another component of the pavement management plan is our roadway classifications. The treatment within the pavement management plan will vary based on the classification of the roadway. And as stated before, those are arterials, local industrial, collector, and local residential. And each road has its own distinct structural section based on its classification. At the top of the, of the slide, you can see there are generally three sections to each structural section. You have your subgrade, which consists of either engineered fill or native ground. Your aggregate base, which you can think of as the foundation of your asphalt. And then the asphalt concrete, of course, which is that actual asphalt layer and riding surface. Each roadway classification has its own minimum structural section, which is based off of both a combination of like the loading, the actual traffic volumes, of course, and the actual size of the loading that will be on there. And what I mean is, you will see that a local industrial section will have a thicker aggregate base or that foundational section than, say, a local residential because you can expect more truck traffic on that local industrial. And same with arterials. You have the greatest amount of traffic, the largest range of sizes of traffic. And therefore, the engineered section is a typical, for example, minimum structural section of six inches of asphalt over 10 inches of that aggregate base. So I'd like to delve into PCI or your Pavement Condition Index and how it is measured. Your PCI is a score of zero to 100, where 100 being is the best, and zero is the worst. And each street composed of asphalt pavement is assigned a number within that index. This helps to categorize each roadway segment by its current condition. I have a comparison on the, on the bottom left. But our average PCI within the city, and this is prior to the ongoing pavement project that is currently finished, or finishing, rather, as well as the upcoming pavement project, which is the last of the five-year cycle, is currently, we're averaging at 71. After those projects are completed, we're projecting a average, again, this is citywide, of 74. Now, this is in comparison to our partners within the county as a whole, Riverside County, and all cities included in that, average about 69. And statewide, as an average, we're looking at a PCI of 65. So we are doing better than both our region as a whole and the state as a whole. These, the Pavement Condition Index is split into five broad groups. Starting with the top is very good, from 86 to 100, to good, 70 to 85, dropping to fair, poor, and very poor as you go down the scale. You can see we have a percentage, again, this is current of all streets within each category, prior to the completion of these remaining pavement projects as part of the five-year cycle. About 18% are in the very good range. 35% are in the good range, 39 in fair. And we have a limited selection of streets that are in poor or very poor condition per this scale. And the current pavement projects will eliminate that very poor section and reduce the amount of poor.
Keegan, real quick, is that 1% very poor? Are they, is it, are they located in the same place? Are they concentrated in the same place? Or are they?
I would say yes and no. It's going to, I, off the top of my head, the streets that, the street, I should say, that is very poor within here are generally in the, say, the oldest areas of the city, we'll call that. Pavement is the oldest and it's aged the longest and hasn't had its share of treatments. It may have been designed as a structural section that is outdated, for example. But we will actually address that later on.
So, okay, I'll sit tight with my questions.
Okay. I just wanted to give a broad overview, too, of the types of pavement distresses. These are generally associated with the age of the pavement, but maybe based on other factors as well. So transverse cracking is your cracking across the street section. Longitudinal cracking is cracking along the street as you drive down it. Then you also go to block cracking, which is a combination of transverse and longitudinal cracking that starts to appear as pavement ages. Potholes, of course, where your finds have began to remove and have started a self-sustaining problem. And then alligator cracking, which is an indicator of both very aged pavement as well as potential subgrade failures. It can re, it can pop up in areas where, say, there's a utility failure as well. And I'll also give a brief overview of the general pavement lifecycle. This is also going to tie in to later slides. But at year zero, you have your new street. At about 10 years, you're in the preventative maintenance period. Generally, you will address this with a slurry seal. At year 20, you, you start looking at rehabilitation. So that thin surfacing, grinding and overlaying of two inches or less. At year 30, generally, your treatment types are going to look at thick resurfacing, say, three to four inches. And then at year 40, again, this is without any lifecycle extensions via the previous treatment types, you're generally looking at full reconstruction. So this can all be tied into the various PCI sections. So we'll start up at the top in the very good condition. So as an example, is M angular Avenue. One, one section of it is at PCI 95. Asphalt is in very good condition and no treatment is needed at this stage. Category two, again, moving down the scale, is the good condition. This is a PCI range of 70 to 85. Typically, this is your preventative maintenance phase. And the street condition can include minor cracks that can be sealed. And your treatment is a slurry seal, is, is the preferred type of the city. This will increase the PCI by three to four points and generally increases that lifecycle of the city. So, or sorry, the city, the street. It'll delay that need for a full resurfacing. And as an example, here's Montoya Drive and an example of the slurry sealing process. So with that slurry seal process, that treatment method, first, there's a need for crack sealing. So those minor cracks that can be sealed. And then you slurry seal over the top. It's only applied to the top asphalt concrete layer after performing that crack seal. And your aggregate base, that foundation, and then the subgrade underneath it remain untouched. Category three is your fair condition. This is a PCI range of 50 to 69. Your typical treatment utilized is a grind or a mill and a thin resurfacing. You start seeing in this stage more longitudinal cracking, transverse cracking. It consists of milling or removing existing asphalt concrete at a specific depth. It can be used when there is not a base failure or a load failure within the roadway structural section. So that alludes again to the, to the alligator cracking that is the most indicative sign. And after treatment, your PCI increases to 100% because you have that new riding surface. So as an example, here's Citron Street, where a section of it is a PCI of 60. Similar in the types of failures and treatment, in fact, is the poor condition. This is your PCI range of 25 to 49. Your typical treatment is, again, a grind or a mill and a thicker resurfacing, usually around that three to four inch range. That's going to depend on the severity of the cracks. And of course, the roadway classification, you won't, you wouldn't be doing a three or four inch mill and resurfacing on a, on a thinner street section. Your asphalt condition may include block cracking, longitudinal cracking, transverse cracking, and you'll start seeing those signs of alligator cracking. And again, your PCI will increase to 100 after treatment. The treatment method for both fair and poor condition, although it differs in thickness, is the same process. You mill that layer of asphalt at a certain depth and then repave. And again, it does not touch the aggregate base or subgrade sections. There may be spot repairs as needed where there may have been a, a local failure. But generally, it, the process remains the same. And of course, in category five, at the bottom of the scale, is your very poor condition street. So your PCI range of zero to 24. The asphalt condition includes severe cracking such as alligator cracks, notable numbers of potholes. The structural section in this range had, that your base and your subgrade have begun to fail and they may to be, need to be reconstructed entirely. This requires costly repairs to achieve the desired. This requires costly repairs to achieve the desired PCI. And of course, since you've rebuilt the entire structural section of the roadway, it increases to 100 after treatment. So as an example, here was Placid Drive before treatment, and then after reconstruction on the right. So the top two layers are completely removed and replaced, your asphalt, concrete, and aggregate base. And then, as needed, there may be subgrade repairs and replacement. Now with these, the pavement condition index, and as it goes down the scale over those years, these treatment types begin to sort of have an exponential cost. So you can see in your preventative maintenance section, it's roughly 40 cents per square foot. So it's therefore most cost-effective to try and keep your streets in that range. Minor resurfacing is at a minimum five times more expensive in the $2 to $4 range. Major resurfacing, again, minimum $4 to $6 range. And of course, reconstruction of an entire structural section, which we want to avoid as much as possible, begins to be in the $8 to $12 per square foot range. So you can see how a preventative maintenance defers those costs. So here's some background on how we have been approaching our pavement rehabilitation projects and how we approach pavement rehabilitation and maintenance within the city. Public Works has two departments and two roles that are directly involved in treating our streets. We have our Street Maintenance Division, which conducts asphalt repairs on a small scale. They patch potholes as a temporary fix and repair sidewalk and curb and gutter on a, again, on a small scale where there's failures. This is headed up by Gene's Group. And generally, we coordinate with them on, say, all of our C-Click fixes to evaluate these, these spot repairs. The CIP Division, on the other hand, conducts asphalt repairs on a larger scale, where a larger project or, again, the yearly pavement rehabilitation projects may take place. So this includes repairing potholes, of course, but also that preventative maintenance improvement, such as the slurry seal, or rehabilitation, such as your grind and resurfacing, or reconstruction on various streets. As part of these projects, we repair sidewalk, curb, and gutter and construct pedestrian curb ramps in accordance with ADA requirements. Previous efforts within the city, we've had a target PCI of 71. We're currently in the final two years of our five-year pavement management plan. And I'd like to note, if you take a look at the map, in red is the project that is currently wrapping up. And in purple is the upcoming remaining year of that five-year plan. And you can see how each of these projects are sort of scattered around the city. They treat various areas. This leads to higher mobilization costs for the contractor, which influences the final bid. It increases coordination challenges between ourselves, utilities, neighborhoods, private developments, other public projects, and of course, our partners in other cities and jurisdictions. And it appears randomized. Another overview is of our existing funding sources. So our pavement rehabilitation, on a yearly basis, is funded by a combination of RMRA funding and Measure A funding. In the current year, or the upcoming year, we're looking at $9.8 million. And there's an expectation of growth over the 10-year period to a degree through those two funding sources, for a total, for this example, 10-year plan, of $115 million over 10 years. And with all of those, that background in mind, here's our proposed 10-year pavement management plan. So I'd like to start with our proposed zone distribution. So we are proposing a 10-zone distribution. We've looked at various other cities who have had zones ranging from seven to up to 20 in some cases. And we feel that a 10-zone distribution not only divides our center line miles and roadway classifications on a data-driven fare basis, but we also examined our other options, as an example, seven-zone distribution, that performed worse when we did, used our Street Saver program to study those effects. As you can see down that scale, the zone PCI generally increases from zones one to 10. So the zone most in need of treatment on the early basis is zone one. I'd like to point out the asterisk, zones, primarily zone eight, but also zone seven and nine, you can see on the next slide, are generally hit by the current and upcoming projects. So after those treatments finish, the expectation is that those zones will increase in PCI up to that good standing. So these PCIs right now are reflective of existing or pre-project conditions. So the benefits of this 10-year zone, or, sorry, this 10-zone 10-year plan. It reduces construction mobilization costs. Your contractor isn't running around all over the city. It promotes efficient coordination efforts with utilities, both outside and within our own utility department and projects. It includes GIS integration for easy access, so residents can see when their zone is up next for rehabilitation. And it eliminates that scattered randomized approach where we are using data-driven solutions to approach these zones and to rehabilitate pavement with each zone. We're presenting three options today. Option one is the fair condition, that's a PCI of 69. This utilizes current street fund allocations only, as projected on the previous slide. 58% of streets needing treatment will receive it. Option two is good condition, a PCI of 71, which utilizes current street funding allocations plus $2.5 million from the general fund. And 63% of streets needing treatment will receive it. Option three is then the good plus, or great condition, a PCI of 80. This utilizes current street funding plus $10 million in additional funding from the general fund annually. However, we're looking at this because it was asked, 100% of streets needing treatment would receive it under this condition. So option one, the fair condition, again, utilizes only current street funds. 58% of streets that need treatment will be treated. However, PCI will drop to 69 at the end of that 10-year cycle. And again, we've had an internal goal of 71 PCI. What you'll also see on these graphs is a deferred maintenance. So by only treating 58% of the streets within the, within the city, you have an escalating deferred maintenance cost. Or you can think of that as a backlog of streets needed to be treated. Option two is the good condition. We hit that 71 PCI stated year goal at year 10. It would require an additional $2.5 million annually from the general fund. 63% of streets that need treatment will be treated. And your deferred maintenance backlog is reduced by about $20 million. And then option three is the good condition. This would require a much larger amount at an additional $10 million annually. However, 100% of all streets needing treatment in each zone would be treated as part of each project, and results in a PCI of 80 at the end of 10 years. And what this does is it creates that stable deferred maintenance backlog. You can now think of it as the streets that need to be treated in upcoming cycles, rather than continuing to grow. We've also projected PCI over a 20-year cycle. If we were to continue to approach this cycle over a 20-year period. You can see at the top of that scale is option three. Again, that maintains that backlog of streets addressed throughout the cycles. Option two would reduce to 67 with no changes after 10 years. And with maintaining the existing plan with existing funding, it would drop to 63 under option one. I'd like to go over the pros and cons of each option. Option one, which you can think of as no new funding. It doesn't require initial funding, or additional funding, as a pro. 58% of streets of each zone will still be treated. However, it doesn't meet the city's current practice of maintaining a minimum 71 PCI. 42% of streets in each zone will not be treated. And it has the highest deferred maintenance deficit of $202 million in pavement repair costs. Option two, this is the good condition, which meets our current practice of maintaining an overall PCI of 71 or better. It would require $2.5 million in additional funding annually. 63% of all streets will be treated. And we feel that it's a good balance between cost and value, the best overall value. Your cons, of course, that would require additional funding from the general fund, estimated at $2.5 million per fiscal year. 37% of streets will still not be treated within each zone. And there is still a deferred maintenance balance of $182 million in pavement repair costs in year 10. Option three, that's your good or great condition at a PCI of 80. It exceeds our past practice of having a PCI of 71 or better. 100% of all streets that need treatment would be treated. We would have the flexibility of use of that RMRA funding source of PCI is 80 or better. And there's no additional deferred maintenance, or no growing deferred maintenance in year 10. Again, it would be a rest on a yearly basis as you move through the cycle. The cons, of course, it is cost prohibitive. It's a significant jump in funding and requires a significant portion at $10 million estimated every year for the next 10 years. And we believe it exceeds that available funding. The Public Works Department recommends pursuing option two. So the ask, as a reminder, that the city council provide direction on its preferred target PCI for the new 10-year pavement management plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I told you asphalt was fascinating. Sylvia, are there any comments from the public?
Mayor, I don't have any speaker cards, and I don't know if anybody's going to come up to the podium.
You guys cool back there? Okay. With that, public comments is closed. We'll head on over to Councilmember Casillas.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I know that we make light of it, but this is, it's funny, like, this is a big deal. When I talk to folks about, like, being on city council, it's not like the, what people perceive that we do and what we actually do. And it's like, it's people, parks, potholes, police, that's what we actually do. So, so thank you, we're talking about potholes today. Okay, a couple of questions, and they're not necessarily in order. I didn't, I'm not thinking chronologically right now. So we score PCI, right? That's an internal score?
Yes, it is.
Councilmember Casillas, can I just interject, though? But that's based on data that we typically hire a third-party contractor to gather for us, and they're able to provide the data that allows us to then come up with that. So it's not something that's as subjective or done internally?
Yes, to add on that, it is 100% data-driven.
Got it. On the line of data, how, where's that question? How confident are we that we have captured our inventory accurately? Are we or someone driving every single road in the city, or is that something we're hiring out for?
Good afternoon. So that was actually part of the first process of this whole entire program. We hired a consultant called Nichols Consulting Engineers, NCE. And as part of the first phase, they actually have a survey vehicle that maybe you guys saw, maybe you guys didn't, that happened toward the beginning of the year, that drove out and inspected every single street within the city of Corona.
So we are 100% confident that we have captured every single street?
That is correct, even the new ones.
Okay, and then when we talk about defining repay, like, repaving a street, it just depends on where it is in the PCI cycle, what treatment it is given, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And that's evaluated still, even though we have our data-driven solutions and even though we, again, it's all, it's all part of a database, regardless of which option is chosen. My engineering team does inspect the streets visually, because that's the only way to capture a lot of the, say, the concrete issues and confirm those findings.
Wonderful. Center line miles, what's the definition?
It is literally the linear measurement of a street, down the center of the street. So it does not take into account lane miles, which are different from center line miles.
So when you've split up the quadrants, you're trying to split them up by equal number of center line miles?
It's, it, the program takes into account both center line miles as well as the roadway classifications. So to try to have a good balance of all of the above when determining those geographical areas.
What slide was that again? I'm trying to find it, the one that said center line, there it is, 24. The same slide 20, the two groups, are these the people who manage addressing repavement? The street maintenance and the CIP, are those both internal, or do we hire out for one of those? Or both of those?
Both internal. Well, except for major CIP projects, of course, we contact out the actual street repaving.
Okay, the rest are just comments for me. So it's interesting, because in my brain, and I don't know where I got this, it's just me, probably. When we think about a 10-year repavement plan, I thought, okay, well, we'll do all the streets in a 10-year timeline, but that's not what we're saying. We're saying within the next, the, this is the plan of how much we can cover over the span of the next 10 years. And depending on which option we go for, we can cover more or fewer.
That's correct.
Because when we did this for the trees, for instance, the logic is different. We're trying to get to every single tree within the city within that cycle. So that's, that wasn't just me, that was, that's a logical thing. Okay, so I want to clarify that that's not, it's not the same. The tree scapes and the pavement, when we're talking about cycles, the capacity is different. So I think that it's really a solid logic. I love the idea of having a cycle that is tied to GIS, where a resident can look for themselves to see, when is my street going to be repaved? I think that's really wonderful, and I can't wait to point people in that direction and to find out myself, because I'm curious. The only thing that I, I worry about, and I wonder if you've thought about this and how we're going to address this, is that not all streets are traveled at the same, at the same volume as other streets. So within the grid, there can be some streets that are used more frequently and are traveled more and can degrade faster, therefore, than others. So what happens if, in a grid, you know, we have a street that has degraded a lot and the rest of it doesn't? Do we, are we, are we so stuck on the grid format that we're just not going to address it? Or have we worked in a way that we can still send maintenance to repave a street even if that grid cycle is not, is not up yet?
So the data would be, it would be on, an ongoing monitoring. So within each zone, so there's a couple of factors to that. Of course, streets with greater volumes of traffic deteriorate faster. So that will be reflected in the selection of the streets for each project. And again, that's confirmed over regular data collection, right? Over that 10-year period. And then if, if a street were to, say, decay at a rapid rate, then it would most likely be selected again for treatment. However, you would need to also examine the factors for that as well. Frankly, if it's, if it's going that fast, there's probably another underlying issue, whether it's improperly built subgrade or any number of other issues that would need to be addressed and examined. But generally, streets follow the same sort of decay cycle based off of that traffic. And a lot of that is based off of those classifications, of course, right? Your arterials are absolutely going to see the most traffic. So that's why their structural sections are thicker. So it is, it is a combination, as I've sort of alluded to, stated before, it's a combination of those traffic volumes, that traffic loading, and the age of the pavement. So we would be taking all of that into account with the, with the program itself and using those data-driven solutions.
Good afternoon, councilmember. So I also want to add on that we also have a goal to resurvey every other year to monitor what Keegan kind of spoke about, so that, to see if there's any deterioration that we're not aware of, and then any treatment that not appropriately captured the previous round, then we will, like, we address those.
Roads, you know what I mean? And then it, it is, it can be enraging to have a street being repaved and know of another street that is in worse condition and be like, but why this one when that one's worse? So I don't want us to get stuck on a cycle where it's like, this is the grid, this is the one we're working on, and not allow for that kind of flexibility to address the roads that are worse. Because there should be no, none in that red category, in my opinion, ever. So, thank you for this. Oh, and as for recommendations, because you did ask that. I mean, it seems like option three is not a real option, we can't afford it. I would love to get to the place where, where that is where we're at. Because again, I think street conditions is one of those things that everyone loves and appreciates. So, but the gap between one and two is small, and between two and three is... So, but the gap between one and two is small, and between two and three is just too large. So option two seems like the logical choice. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, I just had the one question, and you kind of, I think you touched on it here, but my question was, if, if we go with option two, and sixty-three percent of the streets are gonna get treated, thirty-seven percent of the streets in each zone will not be treated, when would they get treated? What would prompt that treatment of the thirty-seven percent? Is it just when you go out every couple of years and reevaluate?
Yes, essentially. Um, generally, we would, we would love to treat every single street that needs to be treated within one cycle or within two cycles. However, it's entirely possible, uh, as we, again, uh, every other year, evaluate the quality or the condition of every road within the zone, um, that a, a street could be left off after multiple cycles, if, if the street is genuinely in great condition or good condition for an extended period of time. Um, but generally, again, pavement deteriorates in a, at a certain rate, so after something's been treated, uh, as part of the first cycle, it is much less likely to get selected for the second cycle, right? In that, in that, uh, year eleven to twenty period. So is it possible that a, a street would be skipped again? Yes. Is it likely? It's just going to entirely depend on the condition of the roadway itself.
Okay, yeah, and I just wanted to ensure that, you know, we don't end up with another gentle drive that wasn't done in forty years because it was for, or sixty years, however long it was, because it was forgotten, or it was, or it's part of that thirty-seven percent that never gonna get done. So I think you answered my question, so I'm also good with option two. Thanks, Jim. Sylvia, did Tony mention anything on this one?
Mayor, I do not have any written comments from our council members.
Let me see where Tony's at. Okay, apparently, all the roads are fixed in District Two, so we're good there. Um, I think with that, I'm, I'm good with option two as well, so. Up next is adjournment. The next meeting is the city council meeting at six-thirty PM. This meeting is adjourned.